Good afternoon and welcome to the New York City Planning Commission Review Session for Monday, August 22, 2022. The time is 1:02 PM and a quorum is present. The first item on our agenda is a certification of a zoning map and zoning text amendment in Queens Community District 6. Our presenter is Taekhyeong Yang.
Good afternoon, Commissioners. Thanks, Sarah. Next slide, please. This is a private application by Werber Management, Inc., and the Reformed Temple of Forest Hills for a zoning map amendment from an R12A zoning district to an R7D zoning district, as well as a zoning text amendment to establish a mandatory inclusionary housing area in Forest Hills, Queens, Community District 6. The proposed actions would facilitate the development of a new 10-story residential and community facility building, which includes space for the Reformed Temple on the ground floor and 153 residential dwelling units, of which 38 to 46 would be permanently affordable on the floors above. Next slide, please. This map represents the existing land use and zoning in the surrounding area. The project area is located within a mix of R12A to the north, R32 pockets, and surrounded by an R6 and R71A and X districts, which contains multifamily apartment buildings ranging from 6 to 13 stories in height. The surrounding area has seen a number of rezonings over the past few years. The CPC recently approved two higher-density rezonings within the 600-foot radius of the development site. The former Parkway Hospital site rezoning was approved by the CPC and Council in 2019 that rezoned the former site of the Parkway Hospital and the lot directly across the street from the former Parkway Hospital site, from an R12A zoning district to an R7A and R7X zoning districts, and amended the text for the zoning resolution to establish a corresponding MIH district, which is shown on the map just north of the development site. In addition, the 112-0671 Road rezoning was approved by the CPC and Council also in 2019 that rezoned the lots on the block immediately south of the development site, within 100 feet of 112th Street, from an R12A zoning district to an R32 zoning district, shown on the map directly to the south of the development site. Next slide, please. The project area is located within Forest Hills neighborhood in Queens Community District 6. The project development site, highlighted in red, is located on the eastern edge of the Forest Hills neighborhood, within two blocks of the Grand Central Parkway and Flushing Meadows Corona Park. The GCP and Flushing Meadows Corona's Park is located on the right of the image. The area is generally characterized by residential buildings and some institutional uses. The residential building consists of a diverse mix of larger apartment buildings with elevators and single-family detached homes. The site that occupies the remainder of the block where the proposed development is to be located is comprised of educational institutions, including Vos Malkov Academy, a private elementary school for girls, and a satellite campus for Toro College. PS196 is located on the block to the immediate east of the development site. A number of residential buildings in the area predate the current zoning and consist of low-to-medium density, multi-story apartment buildings constructed throughout the 1940s and 50s. The area located west of the development site between the site and Queens Boulevard comprised a mix of three-story, six-, seven-, 11-, 13-story apartment buildings. A seven-story nursing home constructed in 1970 is located adjacent to PS196 to southeast the development site outside of this image. Lastly, the area is well-served by mass transit. A transit zone is mapped directly across the street from the project area. The Queens Boulevard subway EFMR lines run along Queens Boulevard with the nearest station and turns two blocks west of the project area at 71st and Queens Boulevard. Express bus service in the area connects the residential area to major job hubs and transit hubs in Manhattan, as well as the local Q60, Q23, and Q64 that run along Queens Boulevard, 108th Street, and Jewell Avenue. Next slide, please. So zooming in a little closer, the development site is owned and occupied by Reformed Temple of Forest Hills and is currently improved to the two-story building containing approximately 22,800 square feet. The image shows the current existing condition of the synagogue at the corner of 112th Street and 71st Road. The Grand Central Parkway would be located towards the back of this photo. Half of the space is used for classroom and office uses on the ground floor, and the other half is used for house of worship on the mezzanine and second floor. Next slide, please. This second image shows the temple's entrance at 112th Street. The temple leases a classroom space to DOE as need basis, such as when the local DOE school is undergoing renovations during Monday through Friday school hours. The current site also contains a four-space surface parking lot, which is accessed via an existing curb cut on 112th Street, located to the left of the image. Next slide, please. This image shows the existing building on the right, looking north at 112th Street, with the contact of the existing seven-story apartment building. The Reformed Temple has been serving the neighborhood of the local Forest Hills community since 1963, when the existing building was built. In 1994, four historic congregational communities came together to form the Reformed Temple of Forest Hills. Unfortunately, the existing building located at the site no longer meets the needs of the congregation. The applicant has noted that being able to provide these congregants with their, I'm sorry, provide their congregants with ADA accessible facilities is of utmost importance to synagogue, because the inaccessibility of the existing building prevents certain populations of the congregation from attending services and community programming. Additionally, the applicants noted that the existing building is comprised of inflexible, inefficient 8,800 square feet single-use space that is challenging to use as gathering space. Next slide, please. The applicant proposes to construct a new building with community facility uses, affordable housing units, market rate units, and below-grade parking. The proposal will contain approximately 126,000 square feet of development, of which 16,600 square foot would comprise of the sanctuary and facilities, and 100,000 square foot would comprise of residential uses. The proposed development would enable the Reformed Temple of Forest Hills to stay at their current location, which is of most importance to the congregants, and would enable them to update their facilities to a space that is ADA-compliant, flexible, efficient, and less costly to maintain. Next slide, please. Lesser plans for the proposed development show a new 10-story building with a base height of approximately 95 feet, after which it would set back 15 feet along 112th Street and 71st Road, and then rise to 113 feet. Next slide, please. The applicant plans to include a sanctuary, multipurpose space, classrooms and offices for synagogues on the ground floor, with community facility entrance located along the 71st Road frontage. The proposed space would be fully ADA-compliant and accessible. An entrance and lobby for the residential portion of the building is proposed to be located on 112th Street. The applicant proposes to have 153 dwelling units located on floors 2 through 10 and plans to utilize either option 1 or MIH option 2. The proposed development would provide 66 parking spaces, of which would be provided in the cellar and would be attended parking with its entrance on the existing curb cut on 112th Street. Next slide, please. This rendering is a bird's-eye view massing of the proposed 10-story development. You can see the GCP towards the top right of the image and the proposed development in red. The rendering shows the 10-story development is in contact to the surrounding area with a mix of 7- to 14-story apartments in its immediate proximity. Next slide, please. The applicant is proposing a zoning map amendment from an R12A to an R7D. The R7D proposed zoning district is a contextual and developments in R7D zoning districts typically result in high lot coverage apartment buildings that are set at or near the street line. The maximum residential FAR permitted is 5.6, with the provision of affordable housing pursuant to MIH. Next slide, please. Furthermore, the R7D zoning district allows for a building to rise up to the maximum height of 115 feet, or maximum of 11 stories, with a base height of 60 to 95 feet before setting back to that 115-feet maximum height limit. Parking is regulated at 50% of the number of dwelling units, but 15 of the total units set aside for income-restricted units. Next slide, please. The applicant is also seeking a zoning text amendment to map MIH options 1 and 2. The applicant proposes to have 153 dwelling units and utilize either option 1 or option 2. If MIH option 1 is utilized, the proposed development would include approximately 38 dwelling-affordable units to households with incomes at or below 60% of the AMI. And if MIH option 2 is utilized, the proposed development would include approximately 46 dwelling units affordable to households with income at or below 80% of the AMI. For context, the AMI for Queens City 6 is approximately $81,000, which is higher than the borough overall, which has an AMI of approximately $72,000. On the map, you can see that number 1, which indicates MIH Area 1 in this community district, has already been designated for the former Parkway Hospital rezoning site north of the development site that was zoned from an R12A to R7A, R7X in 2019, as I mentioned earlier in the presentation. Next slide, please. Pursuant to Local Law 78 of 2021, effective as of June 1, this application requires a racial equity report on housing and opportunity, because it would increase the permitted residential floor area by at least 50,000 square feet. The applicant states that the proposal would produce a new income-restricted housing unit in a location that has high, medium income, and is highly accessible to transit and jobs, and creates a new ADA-compliant housing, which would bolster options for independent living in the community. As noted in the slide before, the AMI for Queens City 6 is approximately $81,000. And using current year US HUD income limits, the applicant proposes to provide MIH units that meet the 40% to 80% AMI with approximate average of monthly rents ranging from $930 to $2,400, at approximate income levels ranging from $37,400 to $106,700 per household size ranging from one to four persons. Next slide, please. As per the report, the racial makeup of Forest Hills and Regal Park is identified as 44% white and 33% Asian, with 3% black and 16% Hispanic. Next slide, please. And in conclusion, the applicant requests a zoning map amendment from an R12A zoning district to an R7D zoning district, as well as a zoning text amendment to establish a mandatory inclusionary housing area in Forest Hills, Queens, Community District 6. The proposed actions would facilitate development of a new 10-story building, which includes space for the Reformed Temple of Forest Hills on the ground floor and residential units with a mix of market rate and permanently affordable housing on the floors above and parking spaces below. Thank you.
Thank you, Haiky. Before we take questions, just let me say, I'm sure that you've noticed by now that I'm not the Chair, Dan Gerodnik, who was on vacation this week. I am still Ken Luckles, the Vice Chair of the City Planning Commission, and I will preside at today's hearing as well as Wednesday's public hearings. That said, let me see if there are any questions for the presentation. I'm not seeing any hands. Can staff help me on this?
Confirming Vice Chair that there are no hands up.
No hands? All right, if there are no questions, this project is certified. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, the second item on our agenda is a pre-hearing review of a, Commissioner Marin, you have a hand up.
Commissioner Mari, did you have your hand up for the prior? I can't. I think you're on mute.
Yeah.
How about now?
Yes.
Good. Good afternoon, everyone. Vice Chair, my question was concerning the zoning designation. And knowing that across the street was R7A, RX, why a higher, an R7D here, where the building is up against the sidewalk? It's a really large building and the sidewalk looks really narrow.
Haiky.
Thank you for that question. The street right now at 112th is at 60 feet wide, and the 71st Road is at 60 feet wide as well. And we believe the R7D is contextual enough to support the proposal that the applicant is providing.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Okay. Project is certified and we'll see it again. Sarah?
The second item on our agenda is a pre-hearing review of a zoning map amendment in Queens Community District 8. Our presenter is Scott Solomon.
Good afternoon, Commissioners. You can move on to the next slide. This is an application by Dr. Mikhail Kantias, seeking a zoning map amendment that would facilitate the legalization of an existing non-conforming medical laboratory at 7918 164th Street in the Hillcrest neighborhood of Queens Community District 8. The application was certified on May 9, and the CPC public hearing is scheduled for Wednesday. Next slide. The project area is oriented on the southwest intersection of Union Turnpike and 164th Street, 162nd Street, the western boundary and the southern end of the project area lining up with 81st Avenue. The surrounding area primarily consists of low-rise residential, commercial, and mixed-use buildings fronting the southern side of Union Turnpike, a 100-foot-wide street that serves as a primary east-west thoroughfare and commercial corridor, and 164th Street, 120-foot-wide street that also serves as a major north-south thoroughfare. One of the outliers of this density is a seven-story residential building on the north side of Union Turnpike, and uses along the two side streets off Union Turnpike are predominantly one and two-family homes. The project area is served by several local and express bus routes with stops located in both Union Turnpike and 164th Street. Routes on 164th Street provide a 13-minute bus ride to the Parsons Boulevard subway station, approximately three-quarters of a mile south of the project area. Next slide. Compared to the previous area map, this larger-scale aerial is rotated slightly. We're now looking northwest into the project area. Project area includes the north, includes the portion or entirety of 12 tax lots. All commercial and community facility uses in the project area, other than the development site, are conforming uses. However, the development site includes a non-conforming second-story medical laboratory that has been operating continuously since 1989 and has never received any use relief from the Board of Standards and Appeals. The proposed development site, outlined in red and fronting 164th Street, is a 4,000-square-foot interior lot, currently approved with a partially non-conforming two-story, 4,000-square-foot building containing a conforming ground-floor medical office and the non-conforming medical laboratory on the second floor that is seeking the legalization. The remaining lots include low and medium-rise, mixed-use, commercial, and community facility buildings, in addition to portions of three lots with single-family attached and detached homes. Next slide, please. Photo 1, photos here of the existing conditions. It's a view of the development site facing northwest from 164th Street. We have the ground-floor medical office, a conforming use, and then the second-story medical laboratory, a non-conforming use. Next slide. Photo 2 is a northwest view of the 164th Street frontage. From left to right is an attached single-family home, partially within the project area, then a two-story office building, laundromat, house of worship, the development site, and then dentist's office. Photo 3. Now, this photo is taking us to the corner. It's a southwest. Just wait for this to catch up. Should be on slide 7, please. Thank you. This is a southwest view of the corner lot building, which consists of a variety of uses, including medical and professional offices, restaurants, and adult trade school, and a gym. The bounds of the project area along Union Turnpike in the background are two mixed-use buildings with ground-floor commercial uses with residential above, before approaching 162nd Street, a 60-foot narrow street. Next slide, please. So applicant is not seeking to facilitate any additional bulk or use changes from the existing conditions at the development site. The applicant has stated that when he closed on the property in 1989, he was unaware of the non-conforming issue, and upon discovering this, decided to pursue the rezoning to remedy the nonconformity. FDNY is also requiring that the property be a conforming use in order for the FDNY to permit or continue to permit the storage of particular hazardous materials that are used in the lab. The facility is essentially a pathology lab that analyzes tissue samples that are sent in from other medical practices. Facility is limited to 10 employees, including the applicant, and patients do not come into the office. The first floor attendant of the applicant is a medical office affiliated with Queens Hospital Center, a health and hospitals corporation facility. Next slide. So to facilitate the legalization, applicant proposes a zoning map amendment to rezone the existing C13 commercial overlay to C23, while maintaining the existing R4 and R5D residential districts. The proposed zoning map amendment does not change the existing zoning boundaries and would maintain the 100-foot depth fronting Union Turnpike and 164th Street. And the proposed C23 overlay would maintain the same commercial, community facility bulk regulations of the C13, maintaining the low-rise character of the surrounding area. However, the medical laboratory would be brought into conformance, and the C2 district would permit a slightly wider range of uses, such as repair facilities and health and fitness establishments beyond gross square footage limitations that exists for C1 districts. Next slide. Community Board 8 voted to recommend disapproval of the application by a vote of 12 in favor, 19 against. Primary concerns expressed was that the applicant created the non-conforming situation and should not be benefiting from the rezoning, and because of fears that the C2 commercial overlay would permit unwelcome uses. Some of them that were explicitly called out were billiard halls and eating and drinking establishments. Again, eating and drinking establishments today are permitted. That includes bars. Next slide. And then, following that, the Queens Borough President recommended approval of the application with no conditions. Next slide. In conclusion, per the applicant, the land use rationale is to reinforce the existing low-rise mixed-use character of the surrounding area, modestly expand the range of permitted uses, provide a stable zoning predictability to the subject properties, which includes several small businesses and community facility uses like the subject laboratory. That concludes the presentation. Again, the applicant representatives are prepared to present on Wednesday, and as will the applicant himself be available for any questions. Thank you.
Questions? I don't see any questions.
I see a few hands up, just the illustrative hands.
I do. Now I see them. Now I see them. Commissioner Bernie, and then Commissioner Gold. And then, well, let me revise that. Commissioner Rampashad, Commissioner Bernie, Commissioner Gold, and then Commissioner Osorio, in that order. Thank you. Commissioner Rampashad.
Thank you, Vice Chair. I just had a quick question. If this was to go through, will the applicant be filing a new alteration type 1 to get a new CFO issue? Because I do see in the current CFO that's issued for the building, it says retail stores on the ground floor. Since there's an office right now, will they be filing after this is, I guess, approved down the line? Have they?
That, you know, that's a good question. My understanding was that the CFO does reflect office space.
For the second floor, offices for the second. But the current use right now, you're saying, is office, correct? As a medical facility?
So the second story is a Use Group 9 laboratory that is non-conforming and essentially, which also operates as an office space. And then the ground floor, that is not seeking any legalization issues. My understanding is that the CFO does reflect an office space. But if that is incorrect, regardless of C1 or C2 would be allowed. So I could let the, inform the applicant to address that CFO issue.
All right. I have a few more questions, but I'll wait till Wednesday when they present. Thank you very much.
You can ask another, you can ask another if you'd like, Commissioner.
No, that's okay. I'm good. Really, the main question I have is whether or not they're going to apply for new CFO if this should go through. Thank you.
All right. Commissioner Bernie?
Oh, thank you. Scott, I was just wondering, did the applicant, why did the applicant not get relief at BSA? Did they not apply, or were they turned down? Do you know what happened?
I don't think they sought BSA relief here. I don't believe, I don't think they believed the BSA would provide this, since it was a self-created hardship. BSA generally doesn't look upon that as something that would be eligible for relief. It was just due to, you know, I'll be honest, you know, when I was looking at this application, the early goings, it wasn't something that was explicitly apparent that would not be allowed. If someone was to call, I would say, oh, this is allowed. It's, I would say, relatively obsolete categorization of a use group that technically needs to be within a C2 district.
Yeah. Okay, thanks.
All righty. Commissioner Gold?
Thank you, Vice Chair. Scott, just one quick question. What do we think is driving them now to be coming for the change, right? I mean, they've been operating in this form since 1989. Is there an enforcement action that's underway, or is there something that we're not seeing?
Sure, that, good question. So first of all, just generally, applicant wants to bring this property into conformance. Oftentimes, when you're seeking to sell a property, he wants to make sure his title is clean, I presume. But secondly, there was a permit that they've been receiving from the FDNY for years, since they've been operating in order to store certain hazardous materials, certain alcohol-based materials. But not because the operation is unsafe, but because FDNY knows that it is now a non-conforming use, is something they came upon. So that's another issue that they're trying to remedy. Not just the use, but they need a conforming use in order to receive an FDNY permit. They've been in communication with FDNY, essentially that as long as they're in good faith effort to correct it, that FDNY will ultimately continue to provide this permit.
Makes good sense. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Commissioner Osorio?
Thank you. Thanks so much, Scott, for your presentation. I had a quick question. Do you know what the status of the E-designations that are in the adjacent lots is right now?
E-designations that were part of the EAS for this application?
Correct.
I don't have the EAS in front of me, but I can have the applicant address it. Yeah, I don't have it in front of me right now. But there were no, there are no existing E-designations from other properties from previous rezonings or land use actions here?
Well, I do see a couple in the property in the corner, for example, toward Union Turnpike and the lots immediately adjacent down 164.
I'm sorry, about a prior rezonings. I think maybe there was the Hillcrest rezoning from a few years back.
I think so. I don't know, but I would love to know what's the status, whether they've been addressed, the E-designations that were declared then.
I can follow up with you on that for prior land use actions. And I can clarify separately from here in email, and also have the applicant address it during the applicant's presentation.
Thanks so much.
You're welcome.
Thank you. Are there any further questions on this item? If not, it is on for a public hearing on Wednesday. Well, you have the opportunity to question the applicants. Thank you.
Thank you.
The third item on our agenda is a pre-hearing review of a zoning map and zoning text amendment in Queens Community District 1. Our presenter is Troy Reeser.
Good afternoon, Commissioners. Next slide, please. This application is returning to the commission after it was certified on May 9, and the public hearing will be held on Wednesday. This is a private application by Crescent Street Associates LLC for a zoning map amendment from an existing from an existing M one-two R five B and M one-two R five D zoning districts to an M one-two R six A zoning districts and a related zoning text amendment to enable and establish mandatory inclusionary housing provisions within the special Long Island City mixed-use districts and the Dutch Kills sub-district. The actions would facilitate the development of an approximately one hundred and seventy-five thousand square foot seven-story mixed-use building containing two hundred and thirty-three dwelling units, sixty of which would be affordable and seventeen thousand square feet of commercial and light industrial floor area at forty twenty-five Crescent Street in the Dutch Kills neighborhood of Queens, Community District One. Next slide. The project area is in the southern portion of the Dutch Kills sub-districts of the special Long Island City mixed-use districts and is located directly north of Queens Plaza, northeast of Hunter's Point, south of Nycha Ravenswood Houses, east of Nycha Queensbridge Houses, and west of Sunnyside Yards. Next slide. In two thousand and one, the Long Island City rezoning rezoned several areas south of the project area as the Queens Plaza, Court Square, and Hunter's Point sub-districts. This rezoning intended to facilitate commercial development at increased densities and allow new residences to mix with commercial and light industrial businesses. The goal was to foster development taking advantage of Long Island City's excellent mass transit access and its supply of large, underdeveloped properties. In two thousand and eight, the Dutch Kills rezoning rezoned forty block area north of Long Island City as a sub-district within the special districts and mapped medium-density contextual mixed-use districts over low-density manufacturing districts. This was meant to provide incentives for affordable housing in areas proposed for higher density and mixed-use development and to reinforce the mixed-use residential and light industrial commercial context. Next slide. I'll note that the view on this map has shifted and is oriented to true north. As you can see, the surrounding area is characterized by a wide mix of land uses, including industrial and manufacturing, residential and public facility uses. The area also has a mix of scales ranging from vacant lots and one-story warehouse buildings to fifteen-story residential buildings with ground floor commercial uses. The project area itself is split into an M one-two R five B district to the east and an M one-two R five D district to the west. Next slide. On this side, the north is now pointing to the right and the project area generally consists of the applicant-owned development site on Lot Twelve outlined here in red, along with seven other lots which are not applicant-owned. The development site is owned by an affiliate of the Rosenwalk Group, which is a major supplier and servicer of water storage tanks and towers and has an area of approximately forty-five thousand square feet with two hundred and fifty-five feet of frontage on Crescent Street and two hundred feet of frontage on Twenty-seventh Street. Part of the development site is improved with a single-story warehouse style buildings that are currently being used as an office space for a pest control service along with a facility in which the owner stores and tests water tanks and cooling tower products. Part of the open area within the development site was formally used as a parking area for food trucks, which are now leasing a different lot a few blocks away from the site, according to the applicant. Next slide. In this view from Crescent Street facing northeast, you can see the development site to the right outlined in red as well as the two-way protected bike line, bike lane along this section of Crescent Street. To the left, you can also observe a nine-story tower, nine-story hotel constructed in two thousand and eight. Next slide. Here you can see a view of the project area and development site as viewed from Twenty-seventh Street to the southwest with the development site outlined in red. In the background, you'll also see the higher-density development in the Queens Plaza sub-districts. Next slide. In this last photo, you can see an image from the intersection of Crescent Street and Forty-first Avenue looking southwest. Or you can again observe the two-way protected bike lane to the left with some older and newer developments on both sides of the street and higher-density developments further south in the background. Next slide. The proposed zoning would facilitate the development of a new seven-story, one hundred and seventy-five thousand square foot mixed-use building containing two hundred and thirty-three dwelling units, out of which sixty would be affordable pursuant to MIH option one. The proposed building would rise to a height of sixty-five feet on both Crescent Street and Twenty-seventh Street before setting back fifteen feet and rising to a total height of seventy-five feet. Next slide. The proposed ground floor would contain around twelve thousand square feet of manufacturing use to be utilized by the applicant's water tank business and would have frontage on Crescent Street and Twenty-seventh Street with a loading berth and a twelve-foot-wide curb cut on Crescent Street. The proposed development's ground floor would also contain about fifty-five hundred square feet of local retail divided into three spaces. The through-lap portion of the development site would have a sixty-foot rear yard equivalent with a permitted single-story of commercial and manufacturing space. A cellar parking facility accessible from Twenty-seventh Street would provide one hundred and eighty-eight required accessory residential, commercial, and manufacturing parking spaces. To address concerns about double parking along Crescent Street, the applicant has been working with the Department of City Planning and the Department of Transportation and is proposing a drop-off zone along Twenty-seventh Street in front of the development site where tenants and deliveries would have access to the building via the residential entrance and through a covered passageway through the courtyard. Next slide. To facilitate the proposed development, the applicant again proposes a zoning map amendment from an existing M one-two R five B and M one-two R five D zoning districts to an M one-two R six A zoning district and a zoning text amendment to enable mandatory inclusionary housing provisions within the special Long Island City mixed-use district and modify appendix F of the zoning resolution to establish an MIH area. Next slide. The proposed zoning map amendment would rezone the project area from an existing, or the existing M one-two R five D and M one-two R five B districts to an M one-two R six A zoning districts within the sub-districts representing an extension of the existing M one-two R six A district that's directly south of the project area, as you can see on the map. The proposed zoning map amendment would allow the development site to be improved with residential uses, provide new ground floor retail to activate the section of Crescent Street and would allow the applicant's business to retain a presence in Long Island City as well as retain the existing jobs on site. Despite the proposed increase in density, the proposed district would continue to serve as a transition between higher-density blocks to the south and the adjacent lower-density districts to the north. Next slide. The proposed map and zoning text amendment would enable and establish mandatory inclusionary housing provisions in a special Long Island City mixed-use districts and would ensure new developments within the project area contain affordable housing. The applicant is proposing MIH option one, which would require twenty-five percent of residential floor area be affordable at an average of sixty percent AMI. Next slide. On June twenty-first, Queens Community Board One held a vote on the application with eighteen members voting in favor, sixteen against, and one abstaining. There were no conditions or recommendations for the vote. Next slide. On June thirtieth, the Queens Borough President held a public hearing for the project and on August fifth provided a recommendation to approve the application with conditions related to local hiring, minority and women-owned business enterprises, and union labor commitments as well as related to the allocation of square footage for community facility space within the development. Next slide. In conclusion, this is a private application by Crescent Street Associates LLC for a zoning map amendment from existing M one-two R five B and M one-two R five D zoning districts to an M one-two R six A district and related zoning text amendments to enable and establish mandatory inclusionary housing provisions within the special Long Island City mixed-use districts to facilitate the development of a one hundred and seventy-five thousand square foot seven-story mixed-use building containing two hundred and thirty-three dwelling units, including sixty affordable units and seventeen thousand square feet of commercial and light industrial floor area at forty twenty-five Crescent Street in Dutch Kills, Queens, Community District One. And the applicant will be available to answer questions during Wednesday's public hearing, but I'm happy to answer any that the Commission has at this point.
I'm sorry, I was muted. Joy, this was certified, this project prior to the requirement of the racial impact studies?
It was. It was certified on May ninth and the RER legislation was effective June first.
All right. Thank you. Questions?
I've already said, and I want to just make clear that my point about racial equity was that the Commission actively, actively, purposely, and willfully does not talk about it and include it in the reports, even if it's not required.
Understood.
Point taken. Did you have any further questions, Commissioner Goodrich?
Someone muted me. So, okay.
Well, you're not muted now. Proceed.
I just want to make my, I just want to make that point clear. So this is an example of it.
Okay. Commissioner Rampishad.
Thank you, Vice Chair. Joy, thank you for the presentation. Just two quick questions. If they can just speak to the sustainable measures that are going to be used on this building. And the other thing is really with the, with the protected bike lanes. Yeah, I don't know what kind of, I know on Crescent Street they have the loading dock there. So just wondering what measures are being taken when deliveries come in. And the reason I bring it up, there's another location I'm going to give from, say, Union, on Queens Boulevard from Union Turnpike to Ascot Avenue, there's a protected bike lane. There are a lot of rows of retail stores. The trucks can't deliver. So what they'll do is they'll go right into the bike lane, knock over those, the cones that they have set up, and they just double park there. It's a, it's a major problem in the evening. You can see it five, five days a week. So I'm just curious, because there is no standing on the opposite side of the street here. If they can just speak to how they, you know, how they're going to handle the loading for the, I guess, that's going to be for the retail portion. Because you did mention that they're in talks with DOT for the residential portion, correct?
Correct.
So I'd be interested to speak to that further on Wednesday. I appreciate it. Thank you.
Absolutely.
Commissioner Bernie, I'm sorry, Commissioner Osorio.
Thank you. Thanks for your presentation. Building on Commissioner Ramperchat's question, I, I wanted to ask specifically about vegetation, additional vegetation, some of the other concerns or recommendations that the board president made, including whether or not, or what's the general response to the, to having a community facility? And in addition to that, whether or to what extent there's been MWBE procurement. Thank you.
Yeah, I'll definitely have the applicant speak to that and provide more information. Thank you.
So much.
Further questions on this item? If not, the item is on for hearing on Wednesday. Thank you.
Thank you.
The fourth item on the agenda is a pre-hearing review of a zoning map amendment in Queens Community District Five. Joy will present this as well.
Hello again. Next slide, please. This application is returning to the Commission after it was certified on April twenty-fifth and again, the public hearing will be held on Wednesday. This is a private application by Robert Thomas for a zoning map amendment from an R five zoning district to an R R five D C two-three districts to facilitate the enlargement of an existing single-story building currently used as an animal clinic with two additional stories, including a total of two dwelling units and twenty-four hundred square feet of residential use at seventy-eight forty-six Metropolitan Avenue in Middle Village, Queens, Community District Five. Next slide. The project area is located in the southern portion of the neighborhood of Middle Village, which is north of Glendale, Ridgewood, and the Queen Cemetery Belt, located southwest of Regal Park and is southeast of Mass Pass. Next slide. The project area is located at the southern end of an R five district that extends along Metropolitan Avenue between Eightieth Street to the east and All Faith Cemetery to the west. Commercial overlays are mapped along Metropolitan Avenue, east and west of the project area, except for the block where the project area is located. The one-hundred-foot-wide avenue is characterized by a range of local retail and service uses, including medical and professional offices, beauty salons, and food and beverage establishments. As seen here, the surrounding area to the north and south of the project area is mostly mapped with R four A and R four one contextual districts that permit one and two-family detached and semi-detached residences. Next slide. The project area consists of blocks thirty-seven seventy-six, lots thirty and thirty-one, and includes the applicant-owned development site on Lot Thirty-one, currently approved with a twenty-five hundred square foot, one-story building used as an animal clinic and one non-applicant-owned site on Lot Thirty. The proposed development site has an area of approximately twenty-six hundred square feet with twenty-five feet of frontage along Metropolitan Avenue and one hundred and six feet of frontage along Seventy-Ninth Street. Lot Thirty, which is the a non-applicant-owned lot, is improved with a three-story mixed-use building with ground floor commercial use and four dwelling units above. Next slide. Here we can see a photo of the project area to the southwest with the development site outlined in red from the intersection of Metropolitan Avenue and Seventy-Ninth Street, including the three-story mixed-use building on Lot Thirty behind the development site and the applicant's animal clinic in the foreground. Next slide. The proposed development consists of the enlargement of the existing one-story building with two additional stories and a total of two dwelling units. The proposed development will have a total floor area of about forty-nine hundred square feet at one point nine four FAR, including the existing twenty-five hundred square feet of commercial ground floor use and the new approximately twenty-four hundred square feet of residential use distributed in two floors above. Next slide. The proposed development will rise to a total height of thirty-three feet and the second and third story will set back from Metropolitan Avenue, the Metropolitan Avenue street line by approximately forty feet along the portion adjacent to Seventy-Ninth Street and approximately fifty-five feet along the interior lot line. The proposed C two-three commercial overlay will bring the existing nonconforming commercial establishments located within the proposed project area into conformance. Next slide. To facilitate the proposed development, the applicant requests a zoning map amendment to change the existing R five zoning districts to an R five D C two-three zoning districts. The R five D zoning district is a contextual residential district designated to encourage residential growth along major corridors such as Metropolitan Avenue and permits a maximum FAR of two-point-oh for residential or community facility uses. This increase is allowable, allowable residential FAR between the existing R five zoning districts at one point two-five and the proposed R five D zoning district at two-point-oh is appropriate at this intersection along Metropolitan Avenue and is consistent with the existing built form located within the surrounding area. The proposed C two-three commercial overlay is also appropriate as a similar commercial overlay is mapped on the block directly east of the project area. And this is the only block along this section of Metropolitan without a commercial overlay. Next slide. On June eighth, Queens Community Board Five held a vote on this application with forty-two members voting in favor, zero against, and four abstaining. There were no conditions or recommendations for the vote. Next slide. On June thirtieth, the Queens Borough President held a public hearing and on July nineteenth issued a recommendation to approve the application with conditions related to local hiring, minority and women-owned business enterprises and union labor commitments as well as related to the use of sustainable building materials and energy systems within the proposed enlargement. Next slide. In summary, this is a private application by Robert Thomas for a zoning map amendment to change an existing R five zoning districts to an R five D C two-three zoning districts to facilitate the enlargement of an existing one-story building with two additional stories and a total of two dwelling units at seventy-eight forty-six Metropolitan Avenue in Middle Village, Queens, Community District Five. The applicant will also be available The applicant will also be available on Wednesday, but I'm happy to answer any questions at this time.
Thank you, Joy. See if there are questions. I don't see any questions. So we'll proceed to Wednesday. This matter is on for for hearing on Wednesday. Thank you.
Thank you.
Next item.
The fifth item on our agenda is a pre-hearing review of a zoning map and zoning text amendment in Brooklyn Community District Twelve. Our presenter is Josh Vogel.
Thank you, Sarah, and good afternoon, Commissioners. And Jeff, we'll start on the following slide, please. This is a pre-hearing follow-up for a private application for a zoning map amendment and zoning text amendment to facilitate the development of a new mixed-use building, including 144,000 square feet of residential space or 106 units and 5,500 square feet of commercial space. The applicant was certified, the application was certified on May 9th, and the public hearing is scheduled for this Wednesday, August 24th. Next slide, please. The project is located at 1571 McDonald Avenue between Avenues M and N in Midwood, Community District Twelve, Brooklyn. Next slide, please. Here's an aerial view looking north towards downtown Brooklyn and Manhattan. The project area is on the border of the Midwood neighborhood, which is in the center of South Brooklyn and Borough Park, which is immediately to the west. The project area includes the entire McDonald Avenue frontage between Avenues M and N, the entire Avenue M frontage, and three lots on East Second Street on the corner of Avenue M. Next slide. So here's a land use map. We can see McDonald Avenue directly in the center, a major northwest corridor that's 100 feet wide. The project area is outlined in light blue with the development site outlined yellow in the middle of the block. The light yellow lots on this map are all residential uses in the surrounding area, mostly off of McDonald Avenue, which ranges from single-family detached houses to low and medium-density apartment buildings. The purple along McDonald Avenue, which is mostly west across from the project area, are industrial uses, which are primarily auto-oriented and building supplies. McDonald Avenue also has a strong presence of commercial uses seen in red. The project area is in the R5 C23 Special Ocean Parkway zoning district. An R5 zoning district is a non-contextual zoning district that allows a residential FAR of 1.25 and a maximum FAR of 2 for most community facility uses. A C23 commercial overlay allows commercial uses in a residential district, often on the ground floor, and permits one FAR for commercial uses. In addition to Washington Cemetery to the north, Sid Wackman Field and Friends Field are public parks with expansive lawns, tennis courts, and baseball diamonds. The area is well-served by mass transit and is located within a transit zone. The elevated tracks for the F subway line run along McDonald Avenue with station entrances located at either end of the proposed project area block. The area is also served by multiple bus lines. Next slide, please. Here's a site view looking north from Avenue N of McDonald. We see a row of two-story residential buildings with ground floor commercial on the right in the project area. Next slide, please. And here's an additional view of the project area. Now we're looking mid-block where we can see the development site outlined in yellow. The development site was previously a parking lot and a single-story furniture store. The furniture store on the northern end of the development site, which would be on your far left here, is applicant-owned and now vacant pending demolition. The former parking lot is now under construction for World Spa, a full-service spa, which we can see in this photo, under construction. Next slide, please. The proposed actions would facilitate the enlargement of the spa by adding 10 stories. The mixed-use building would contain approximately 144,000 square feet of floor area or 4.58 FAR. The proposed development would include a new two-story commercial use where the current furniture store is located. The, next slide, please. The building's street wall would set back five feet per C44L district regulations. Required accessory parking would be located above on the second and third stories, which would be adjacent to the elevated train and shelter the residential units above from the noise of the subway. Above the parking, these residential units would occupy floors four through 11, seen here in blue. The residential portion will include approximately 106 dwelling units, of which 37 would be permanently affordable to households with incomes at or below 80% of the area median income. Next slide, please. The proposed actions include a zoning map amendment to change the existing R5 C23 district along McDonald Avenue to a C44L within the Special Ocean Parkway district. The C23 district currently extends along Avenue M between McDonald and East Second. The proposed C44L district would only be mapped on the McDonald frontage since the section of Avenue M does not contain any commercial uses. The C44L zoning district is a contextual commercial district that is designated for corridors with elevated rail lines like McDonald Avenue and allows mixed-use buildings at a residential equivalent of R7A. An R7A zoning district is a contextual zoning district with a maximum residential FAR of 4.6 with MIH, which would be required in the C44L portion of the project area and allows an FAR of 4.0 for commercial and community facility uses. No parking is required for commercial uses and most community facility uses. Parking is required for market-rate residential units or for 50% of the units, but no parking is required for income-restricted units within the transit zone. Additionally, for lots fronting an elevated line, buildings are required to set back five feet from the street line at the ground floor, allowing for the widening of the sidewalk, along with a minimum base height of 25 feet and a maximum base height of 65 feet. Next slide, please. The applicant is also proposing a zoning text amendment to Appendix F to map MIH co-terminals with the C44L district, creating permanently affordable housing via MIH option two for incomes averaging 80% of AMI. Next slide, please. On June 28th, Community Board Twelve held a public hearing and with a vote of nine in favor, 17 against, and six abstaining, voted to disapprove of the application without recommendations or conditions. Just to be clear, they were voting in reference to the application, not the motion to disapprove. Concerns from the community board at the hearing included building height and not including enough parking. Next slide, please. The Brooklyn Borough President held a public hearing on July 21st, 2022, and recommended to approve with the following conditions: to eliminate parking that is not required by zoning, to retain a nonprofit administering agent for the Affordable Housing Lottery, to incorporate sustainability measures such as blue roofs, passive house design, and solar power, to coordinate with DEP, parks, and DOT to install rain gardens in consultation with Community Board Twelve and other local electeds, to work with DOT, Community Board Twelve, and the council member to implement a traffic management plan, to retain Brooklyn-based contractors, suppliers, and provide jobs for local residents. And additionally, there was a note for DCP to revise C44L district regulations to, quote, discourage accessory parking and instead direct private funds towards residential construction, including additional affordable housing. Next slide, please. In summary, this is a private application for a zoning map amendment from R5 C23 to a C44L and a zoning text amendment to Appendix F to facilitate the development of a new mixed-use development. That includes my presentation. I'm happy to take any questions, and the applicant team will also be at the public hearing on Wednesday to follow up with any questions.
Thank you, Josh. Questions? I don't see any hand up. I do see a hand. Commissioner Bernie.
Thank you, Vice Chair. Just a quick thing, Josh. 188 parking spaces. Community Board says not enough parking. Borough President says too much parking. What does the department say about that? And it's in a transit zone, obviously, so you would think that parking would be less required.
Yes, so 35 spaces are required for the residential, market-rate residential units, and also the BSA special permit for the spa did require 37 accessory parking spaces for the commercial spa, so that's 72. And we can speak more to the rationale post-hearing, but we, you know, we had, and as when I presented this for certification, you know, we did say this was an appropriate district here due to the width of the street, the transit access.
Yeah, I mean, the transit access would lead you to think that you would not want to exceed that required by zoning.
Yes. But this is a community that, this is a community that they, so they revised their plans in response to the community concerns, which is not in the application in front of us, just their illustrative plans, and they can speak more to those on Wednesday. But this is a community that, despite the great transit access here, is very reliant on cars, and they made that clear in their recommendation.
Okay, okay, thank you.
Thanks.
Other questions on this item?
Yes, I have a question.
Commissioner, Commissioner Osorio.
Thank you, Vice Chair. Thanks so much, Joshua, for your presentation. I had a couple of questions. The first question has to do with, generally, I'm wondering if you can share whether or not there's been additional information provided on the request from the Borough President regarding sustainable infrastructure. I know that some of the renderings toward the end of the package show green roofs and solar, but I was wondering if the department considers that they're in compliance with local laws 92, 94, et cetera. That's the first question.
Thank you for the question, Commissioner. Yeah, so they, in their illustrative plans, they do include solar panels, which is kind of outside of the application in front of us and just illustrative. So I will make a note of that and make sure they can speak to exactly what they're, what they're doing in response to the Borough President's recommendations on Wednesday.
Thank you. Think on the twin track, the other question has to do with the other comment they received from Borough Hall regarding the retaining a nonprofit administrative agency for affordable housing units. Do you know if, if, where they're, what's been their response to that?
Yeah, thank you for the question. They have not communicated that to us, but I'll follow up with them later to make sure that they can report back on Wednesday. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner. Any other questions on this item?
It appears Commissioner Murray has his hand up, too.
Ah, okay. Thank you.
Thank you, Vice Chair. So along the lines of Commissioner Osorio's question, if this is an affordable housing project, if the MIH becomes an HPD affordable housing project, HPD requires a third-party monitor for the affordable housing units. Do we know if they're getting subsidy from the city of New York?
Last communication, thank you for the question, but last communication we had with them, they were not seeking any additional subsidies. If that changed, I'll check with them again, and they can speak to it on Wednesday.
That may be the key, and then if that's the case, then I would, I would also recommend that there be a not-for-profit third-party community sponsor who is going to make sure that there's compliance within this building.
Great. Noted. Thank you.
Further questions, Commissioner Murray?
No, Vice Chair. Thank you.
All right. Any further questions on this item? If not, it's on for hearing on Wednesday. Thank you.
Thank you.
The sixth item on our agenda is a pre-hearing review of a zoning map and zoning text amendment, UDAP designation, disposition of city-owned property, and urban renewal plan amendment in Brooklyn Community District 16. Our presenter is Jukey Sun.
Good afternoon, Vice Chair Knuckles and Commissioners. Next slide, please. This is an application by the Department of Housing Preservation and Development for a UDAP and disposition, an urban renewal plan amendment, a zoning map amendment, and a zoning text amendment to facilitate four new buildings along Livonia Avenue in the Brownsville neighborhood of Brooklyn, Community District 16. This project was certified on May 23rd, 2022, and the public hearing is this upcoming Wednesday. Next slide, please. As you may recall, Livonia Four is part of HPD's 2017 Brownsville Plan, which was a community-based planning process to develop the shared vision and plan for the future of Brownsville. In coordination with the release of the Brownsville Plan, HPD issued the Brownsville RFP to redevelop several large vacant city-owned sites within Brownsville, each focusing on a specific theme to address community goals. The theme of Livonia Four is healthy living and food systems. Next slide. The proposed developments are four new buildings containing approximately 430,000 square feet of floor area, including residential floor area, commercial floor area, community facility, and community facility with sleeping accommodations. This includes 498 affordable units and 15 parking spaces. Next slide. Livonia Four consists of four developments within two project areas along Livonia Avenue, along the elevated three-train line. The surrounding area is primarily residential. To the north are NYCHA's Van Dyke Houses, Tilden Houses, and Brownsville Houses. To the east is the East New York Industrial Business Zone. The area is well-served by public transportation, including the three-train, the L train, the B14 bus, and the B60. Next slide. The lots in Project Area One are zoned R6 with a C24 overlay. The primary zoning district mapped within the surrounding area is R6. Next slide. The lots in Project Area Two are also zoned R6. The primary zoning district mapped within the surrounding areas is R6. An R72 district mapped with mandatory inclusionary housing is located directly to the east of Project Area Two. This was mapped as part of the 2018 Marcus Garvey Village rezoning. Next slide. Project Area One consists of 20 tax lots with a total lot area of approximately 80,000 square feet. It is mostly vacant city-owned lots. Next slide. Moving into some photos of Project Area One, the orange line designates the project area, and the blue dash line designates the development site. This photo faces southwest from Livonia Avenue towards development site C1. Next slide. This photo faces southeast from Livonia Avenue towards development site C2. Next slide. This photo faces southwest from Livonia Avenue towards development site C3. Next slide. Project Area Two consists of seven tax lots with a total lot area of approximately 20,000 square feet. It consists of vacant, city-owned lots, privately-owned lots, and the Thomas Boylan Community Garden, which is operated by the Parks Department. Next slide. This photo faces southwest from Livonia Avenue and Amboy Streets, Street, towards development site C4. Next slide. This rendering faces southwest from Livonia Avenue, looking from under the elevated subway tracks at the proposed development at Site C1. The proposed development is a 12-story mixed-use building that will contain approximately 207,000 square feet of floor area with an FAR of 5.15. This includes 225 multifamily affordable rental units, a supermarket, and local retail. It would set back approximately 15 feet from Livonia Avenue to allow, excuse me, to allow natural light to reach the street level before rising to a height of 75 feet. Above 75 feet, the building would set back 15 feet before rising to a final height of 130 feet. Next slide. The commercial and community facility uses would be accessible on the ground floor from Livonia Avenue. The main residential entrance would be located on Sackman Street. At this time, the community facility space is anticipated to include a rooftop garden with a greenhouse. Next slide. This aerial rendering faces southeast from Livonia Avenue, looking at Site C2. The proposed development is an 11-story building that would contain approximately 53,000 square feet of floor area with an FAR of 5.84. This includes 80 supportive housing units and, on the ground floor, 4,800 square feet of community facility area. Site C two would set back approximately six feet from Livonia Avenue before rising to a height of seventy-five feet. Above seventy-five feet, the building would set back nine feet before rising to a final height of one hundred and fifteen feet. Next slide. The main entrance for building residents and visitors to the community facility space would be located on Livonia Avenue. Next slide. This rendering faces southwest from the north side of Livonia Avenue, looking at Site C three. The proposed development is a twelve-story mixed-use building that would contain approximately one hundred and four thousand square feet of floor area with an FAR of five point six-one. This would include approximately one hundred and thirty-nine senior housing units, sixteen hundred square feet of local retail on the ground floor, and a nine thousand seven hundred square foot senior center also on the ground floor. The proposed development at Site C three would set back five feet from Livonia Avenue before rising to height of seventy-five feet. Above seventy-five feet, the building would set back thirteen feet before rising to a final height of one hundred and twenty-five feet. Next slide. The main residential entrance would be located on Mother Gaston Boulevard, while retail and community facility spaces would be accessible from Livonia Avenue. HPD will work with a team of architects and designers to do community outreach to determine the design and use of the proposed landscape activity space at the corner of Mother Gaston Boulevard and Livonia Avenue. Next slide. This aerial rendering faces southwest from Livonia Avenue and Amboy Street at Site C four, which is in Project Area Two. The proposed development is a twelve-story mixed-use building that would contain approximately sixty-five thousand square feet of floor area with an FAR of six point four-nine. This includes approximately fifty-four affordable units and a nineteen thousand square foot youth recreation facility on the ground floor. The building would set back five feet from Livonia Avenue before rising to a height of seventy-five feet. Above seventy-five feet, the building would set back fifteen feet before rising to a final height of one hundred and twenty-nine feet. Next slide. The main entrances for building residents and visitors to the community facility space would be located on Livonia Avenue. Next slide, please. HPD proposes four actions to facilitate the proposed developments. First, an urban development action area designation, project approval, and disposition of city-owned property known as a UDAP. Second, an urban renewal plan amendment. Third, a zoning map amendment. And fourth, a zoning text amendment to map an MIH area. Next slide. The first action the applicant proposes is an urban development action area, project designation, and disposition of city-owned property for fifteen tax lots on four blocks within Project Area One and Project Area Two. You can see those lots on this slide. Next slide. The second action the applicant proposes is an urban renewal plan amendment action to change the land use designation of urban renewal areas one forty, one forty-one, and one forty-two from commercial to residential use. These sites fall within Project Area One. This would allow residential use in addition to commercial use pursuant to zoning on these sites. Next slide. The third action the applicant proposes is a zoning map amendment. This slide shows the proposed change in Project Area One from an R six C two-four zoning district to an R seven-two C two-four district. Next slide. In Project Area Two, the applicant proposes a zoning map amendment from R six to R seven-two C two-four. This would extend the nearby R seven-two C two-four district, which was approved by the Commission in two thousand and eighteen for the Marcus Garvey Village rezoning. Next slide. The R six zoning district is a medium-density apartment building district. It results when, it results in seven to fourteen-story apartment buildings. It is mapped all over the city and can result in a wide variety of building types, from tower-in-the-park-style buildings to six-to-eight-story apartments. Next slide. The R seven-two zoning district is a quintessential New York City apartment building district. It results in ten-to-thirteen-story district, excuse me, ten-to-thirteen-story apartment buildings. It's especially appropriate along Livonia Avenue, where the flexible regulations allow a setback from the elevated train. When paired with MIH, it has a base height of forty to seventy-five feet and a maximum building height of one hundred and thirty-five feet. C two-four districts are commercial overlays mapped as overlays in residential districts. C two-four districts allow a range of local-serving retail and service uses. Commercial uses have a maximum FAR of two point oh. Next slide. The fourth action the applicant proposes is a zoning text amendment to map an MIH area over Project Area One and Project Area Two according to MIH Options One and Two. Next slide. In summary, this is an application by HPD for four land use actions to facilitate four new one hundred percent affordable eleven- and twelve-story mixed-use buildings, totaling four hundred and thirty thousand square feet with four hundred and ninety-eight dwelling units in Brownsville, Community District sixteen, Brooklyn. Next slide. On June twenty-eighth, two thousand and twenty-two, Community Board Sixteen held a public hearing on Livonia Four. They voted one in favor, fourteen against, and eleven abstaining, producing an unfavorable recommendation. In their recommendation, and I quote, "The board requested that the Department of Housing Preservation and Development provide information on the encroachment issue to the adjacent property owners and work with them to mitigate the financial impact that might befall the adjacent property owners should they have to relocate the fences that a, but, excuse me, that a but block three eight one two, lots nineteen, twenty, twenty-one, twenty-two, and one twenty-one, and block three eight one three, lot one fifteen." And I'll go into those encroachments in a minute on the next slide. On August fifteenth, two thousand and twenty-two, the Brooklyn Borough President's Office issued their recommendation, approved with conditions. Those conditions were, and I quote, "Work proactively with affected Nehemiah Houses owners to address outstanding encroachments on city sites, and modify the project plans to remove the fifteen proposed accessory parking spaces." Next slide, please. The encroachments referred to in the Community Board and Borough President recommendations relate to several areas, which I've highlighted here in purple, that are along the boundaries between the development sites and the adjacent private property, where portions of private property encroach into the city-owned sites. These include chain-link fences, standalone masonry walls, and other features. The applicant will speak to these encroachments in more detail at the public hearing on Wednesday. That concludes my presentation. I'm happy to take any questions.
Thank you, Julius. Let me see if there are questions. And just to clarify, HPD will be present on Wednesday as a part of the presentation to answer any possible questions, is that correct?
Yes.
Okay. Commissioner Mari?
Thank you, Vice Chair Knuckles. Julius' question on the encroachments. Is the developer prepared? First of all, do they, and do they diminish the amount of developable square feet for the project?
Commissioner Marin, I'm gonna let the developer and the applicant speak to that one. I don't have a good answer for that.
The reason why I'm asking is because having, having developed property recently, adjacent to someone who developed property, and the city having neglected property for so many years, the award went to the neighbor next door. So I just want to bring that out and make it quite clear that that may be a position that would be taken here, as well as to enlighten, to try, have the developer understand what the loss of that developable square foot may be, if at all, detrimental to the project. So it is a concern. It is something I'm watching, and I would like to see how the, the design, the team responds on Wednesday. Thank you.
Thanks, Commissioner Marin, and I'll make sure that they're ready to speak to that.
Thank you, Commissioner. Commissioner Osorio?
Thank you, Vice Chair. Building on Commissioner Marin's question, I wanted to know, what is the position of the Department of City Planning in terms of their response to the encroachment issue, but also the second concern, which is how HPD has handled the community concern?
So, this is Alex Summer, the Deputy Director of the Brooklyn Office. How do I do today, Commissioner? So to respond to the first question, we're, to Commissioner Marin's question, I think trying to better understand the implications associated with the amount of loss, potential loss for the amount of floor area. As you know, this is a hundred percent affordable housing development, so we're trying to understand the implications here associated with that. As HPD will, I expect to them to discuss this on Wednesday, most of the encroachments are relatively minor, in the couple of inches to a foot or two, with most of them being fencing, chain-link fence and some masonry fences. I think what we'd like to hear from HPD and the applicant team is how they're going to be able to respond to these concerns about relocating those fences to prevent any potential loss. But that's something that we're, we're gonna find out more on Wednesday. And yes, we, as we've been recipients to the public testimony, and Jukey's been attending some of the community meetings, and so understands the significant concerns that have been raised, and we're very sympathetic to the issues that they've raised when it comes to communication and engagement. And so, again, looking forward to HPD's response to those concerns on Wednesday.
Thank you, Alex. I appreciate that. I have a second question, which has to do with the rationale behind the fifteen accessory parking spaces. And I was wondering if you can share a little bit, what's been sort of your analysis on this? What's the position of the department on it? I mean, I highlight something that the Borough President, the Brooklyn Borough President has raised, but that also sort of bounds on me, given the fact that, you know, this is a significant, there's significant public transit infrastructure here, and so can this be an opportunity to disencourage car use? I would like to know, what are your thoughts on that?
Alex, I can start on the rationale, which was, my understanding is the developer wanted to provide some parking spaces for the commercial property that is going to be located, both the supermarket and the retail in development site C one. And the intent was not like for it to be used by the residents so much as for the commercial space. As far as the office stance, Alex, I'll defer to you on that.
Sure, we always like to see less parking as part of newer developments that are directly adjacent to transit, so again, this one was based on the potential for the supermarket tenant and the programmatic needs, rather than required by zoning or for the residential uses. So, again, punting to HPD on Wednesday to discuss the relationship to the proposed tenant.
That'll be excellent. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Commissioner Kiermani, did you have a question?
Yes, thank you, Vice Chair, and thank you for the presentation. Just have a question on the, and a comment on the supermarket tenant and whether the applicant has made mention of engaging the community in discussion of who that tenant will be, given the history of the area and its lack of, of kind of available food and what kind of food.
Thanks, Commissioner Kiermani. I know there was quite a bit of outreach in broadly about the nature of what was wanted for the sites in the Brownsville Plan engagement process, but as to the particular tenant for the supermarket, I'm gonna defer to HPD and the development team on that one.
Thank you, and I have one other question. I'm sorry if this is known to everyone, but not me. Can you describe for me, what are, what are sleeping accommodations?
So, is this in reference to community facility with sleeping accommodations? Yeah, so, great question. It is, it has to do with the supportive housing units and the breakup of the classification of the floor area. And basically, the community facility with sleeping accommodations is, I believe, a sort of a dormitory-style sleeping accommodation, but it's just slightly different in the, like, use group classification in the land use designations there.
Great, thank you so much.
Commissioner, is this your first hearing or second hearing? I forget.
It is my first hearing.
Well, welcome to the commission.
Thank you so much. Thrilled to be here.
Thank you. Other questions on this item? Commissioner Rampershot?
Thank you, Vice Chair. Thank you, Julius. Quick question, with regards to, I guess, the site, Project Area One, C three, can they just, or can they provide some renderings of this landscape activity space? Just wanna see what that looks like. I didn't see any in our package, our briefing package, so I was just curious what that's gonna look like, and I'm, who's gonna be maintaining it, you know, and so forth, so.
Thanks, Mr. Rampershot. I will pass that along to the applicant.
Okay. Other questions on this item? Not seeing any. The matter is on for hearing on Wednesday. Thank you. Next item.
The seventh item on our agenda is a pre-hearing review of a zoning map and zoning text amendment in Special Permits in Brooklyn Community District Five. Our presenter is Corinza Wood.
Good afternoon, Commissioners. This is a pre-hearing presentation for Innovative Urban Village, a private application for rezoning, text amendments, and special permits to facilitate a faith-based mixed-use development with approximately two thousand affordable homes that would be anchored by a community-oriented core comprising a new performing arts center, a daycare, an adult trade school, and the existing Christian Cultural Center. The project was certified on May ninth, and the public hearing will be held on Wednesday. Next slide. The project would be located on a ten-acre site in the East New York neighborhood of Brooklyn Community District Five, shown here in the thick dotted outline. As you can see here, the project is in the eastern part of Brooklyn, within a mile of the Belt Parkway, as well as the three and L trains. Next slide. The project was conceived and is being driven by the Christian Cultural Center, or CCC, a nondenominational church that was founded by the pastor, who still leads the church today. The CCC draws parishioners from the local community and across the city. The building has a footprint of fifty-six thousand square feet, and its main worship hall can seat thirty-eight hundred people. The CCC is more than simply a house of worship and contains spaces such as a cafe, classrooms, meeting rooms, and gathering spaces that organizations use for other functions. The CCC organization owns all of the land shown here between the trees on either side, which you can see is mostly used for parking. The CCC found a partner with experience developing mixed-use projects, the Gotham Organization, and together they are proposing to create an urban village around the existing CCC building, supporting and growing the community by providing new housing opportunities, services, and cultural and social activities. Next slide. The unique aspect of this project is its community facility core, consisting of the CCC, a performing arts center, or PAC, a childcare center, and an adult trade school, all located around a public lawn in the center of the site called the Central Quad. Surrounding this core would be eight residential buildings ranging from twelve to fifteen stories with ground floor commercial use around the perimeter of the site. An internal street network and landscaped public open space would invite the public into the site and integrate it with the surrounding area. In total, the development would include nearly two million square feet of floor area and have approximately two thousand units of housing, over four acres of public open space, and nearly nine hundred parking spaces in total. Next slide. The project site is located along the south side of Flatlands Avenue, between Louisiana Avenue on the west and Pennsylvania Avenue on the east. Flatlands and Pennsylvania are both main thoroughfares and designated local truck routes. The project site is just north of Starrett City, now called Spring Creek Towers, which has fifteen hundred affordable housing units, schools, retail, and a rec center. Less than a mile east of the site, there are two significant mixed-use developments on public land. The Gateway Development, which includes the very popular Gateway Center Mall, and twenty-five hundred units of housing, shown in blue. And to the right of that in orange, the Fountains and Brooklyn Developmental Center mixed-use project will And to the right of that in orange, the Fountains and Brooklyn Developmental Center mixed-use project will have 4,000 units when complete. There is a significant amount of open space in the area. About one mile south, the 400-acre Shirley Kism Park has amenities like biking, fishing, and picnic areas. And the Brooklyn Ball Field is catty corner to the development site in the northwest. Next slide. The surrounding area has a mix of built forms with Tower and Park and two to three-story attached homes, one-story retail with large parking lots, and one-story warehouse buildings and lots with automotive uses. The area is served by multiple bus lines running along Pennsylvania and Flatland Avenues, two express buses to Manhattan, a select bus that connects the development site with the L train and two stops, a limited bus to downtown Brooklyn, and three local bus routes, two of which connect to the L train and one that connects the development with the Gateway Center Mall and the 3 train. As part of this project, the applicant would provide shuttles to the L and 3 trains for use of site residents and visitors. Next slide, please. The blocks, the blocks north of Flatlands Avenue opposite the development site are part of the Flatlands Fairfield Industrial Business Zone, and accordingly, the area is largely industrial and zoned M11. The rest of the surrounding area is generally residential and zoned R5, though these are areas, there are areas along Flatlands, Pennsylvania, and Louisiana, with one-story retail uses and large parking lots, which have various C2 commercial overlay districts mapped. Our five districts allow residential uses at 1.25 FAR and community facility uses at 2 FAR in buildings with a maximum height of 40 feet. When a commercial overlay is in place, up to one FAR of commercial use is allowed. Next slide, please. This image is looking east along Flatlands from the intersection with Louisiana. The development site is on the right behind the trees, and on the left you can see the auto-related uses along the north side of the street. Next slide. Looking south down Pennsylvania from Flatlands Avenue, you can see the development site on the right in the surrounding context of Tower and Park Buildings. Next slide. This is an image looking north along Louisiana Avenue near the intersection of Vindalia Avenue. A one-story shopping center is on the left, and Nyches Vindalia Complex for seniors is on the right. Next slide. The development site has about 600 feet of frontage along Louisiana, 1,000 feet along Flatlands, and 300 feet along Pennsylvania, with a total acre, area of 10.3 acres. The only development on the site is the two-story Christian Cultural Center, which is approximately 90,000 square feet or .2 FAR. The striped portion of the site has 385 parking spaces, and the church had, until the pandemic started, used the un-stripe portion for overflow parking for about 400 vehicles. Within the last year, the CCC started allowing a bus company to temporarily locate vehicles here. The site is currently accessed by two driveways along Louisiana and two along Flatlands Avenue. Next slide. The applicant seeks to develop the site with a mix of residential, community facility, and commercial uses. The proposal includes 10 new buildings, eight mixed-use residential buildings with approximately 2,000 units, including 200 for seniors and 100 for home ownership, a performing arts center and a parking garage. The proposal also includes over four acres of open space and internal network of private streets that would be built to DOT standards and essentially act and feel like public streets. The CCC would be maintained and anchor a core of community-oriented uses located around a 2,000-square-foot central quad, a trade school for adults, the CCC, the PAC, and a childcare center that wraps around a playground that is open to the general public. The eight residential buildings would be located along the site perimeter, but have local retail or other commercial uses on the ground floor. The continuous storefronts along Louisiana and Pennsylvania would be enhanced by a five-foot sidewalk widening on these streets in front of buildings 1, 3, 5, and 6. The public parking garage would be tucked behind the PAC and CCC and would contain the approximately 110 required accessory parking for all the retail and community facility uses. It would have a maximum capacity of 500 spaces to accommodate needs of large events like Sunday services, but is not expected to be utilized at full capacity all the time. Normally, the public garage would only be accessed from Louisiana, but there is a shared street, the shaded area to the north and west of the central quad that would be opened up for traffic to leave from the garage onto Flatlands after large events. This area would be blocked off to traffic at all other times. Residential parking would be accommodated separately from public parking. There would be about 390 spaces for residents, which should be distributed across residential parking garages that would be accessed in buildings 2, 4, and 9, 10. The plan also includes developing a network of pedestrian paths through landscaping with pedestrian amenities such as benches and tables. The entry plaza and the open space around the CCC would connect to the central quad, and the internal streets would facilitate the movement of people through the site. Next slide, please. This is a view of the intersection of Pennsylvania and Flatlands, where the applicant proposes to include a grocery store at the ground floor. Commercial spaces are planned for the ground floors along the entirety of the site perimeter facing public streets. Next slide, please. This is a view along the interior street that runs parallel to Flatlands on the eastern half of the site. This residential street lined with masonettes, which are essentially two-story row homes that each have their own individual entrance from the street. These provide a transition between the street and the 12-story-plus multifamily residential buildings. Next slide, please. This is a view looking south from the main project area entrance at Flatlands Avenue toward the central quad and the PAC. To the right, you can see a two-story arcade that would allow for direct visual connection to the PAC and the quad from outside of the project. Next slide. This is the view of the entry plaza at the corner of Flatlands in Louisiana, looking into the CCC. This would replace the existing CCC entry plaza with one that is much more inviting, with lush landscaping seating, and would be ADA compliant. Next slide. From the entry plaza moving within the site along the north side of the CCC, you'd arrive at this view of the central quad, which is planned to be fully open to the public. The applicants have said that they intend to program the site with publicly accessible events like holiday fairs or events that would complement the surrounding uses. Next slide. In summary, the proposed development would be, would total 1.9 million square feet, including about 100,000 square feet each of commercial and community facility space. There would be approximately 2,000 residential units, all of which the applicant intends to be income-restricted, plus over four acres of new public open space and about 900 parking spaces, with 500 for the public use and the rest for residents. Next slide, please. To facilitate the proposed development, the applicant is requesting a rezoning, zoning text amendments, a special permit for a large-scale general development, and a special permit to allow for the proposed parking garage. Next slide. The applicant is requesting to rezone an area that is roughly the same as the development site and is currently zoned R5. They are proposing an R72 zoning district with a C24 commercial overlay over the entire site. R72 districts allow residential uses to a maximum FAR of 4.6 when paired with MIH, and a maximum FAR of 6.5 for community facility uses. With the C24 overlay proposed, retail and other commercial uses would be permitted up to 2 FAR. Quality housing regulations are mandatory when MIH is mapped with R72, requiring buildings to be located at the street with a base height between 40 and 75 feet and a maximum building height of 135 feet or 13 stories. Next slide, please. The applicant is proposing an amendment to Appendix F of the zoning resolution to add a new MIH area that would be co-terminus with the rezoning area. The applicant has proposed to map the entire, map the area with MIH Option 1, which broadly requires that 25% of the residential floor area is permanently income-restricted to households with an average affordability at 60% of AMI, which is currently 72,000 for a three-person household. MIH Option 1 further requires that 10% of the MIH area is affordable to households of 40% AMI, currently 48,000 for a three-person household, and limits the highest income band for the MIH units to be 130% of AMI or 156,000 for a family of three. The applicant has said that the proposed development will be 100% affordable and would comply with Option 1. They intend to further commit to limiting the top income band served to 100% of AMI for home ownership units and 80% of AMI for rental units. Next slide, please. The applicant is also proposing a change to Appendix I of his zoning resolution to expand the transit zone, which is shown here in yellow, to include the area Magenta, which is co-terminus with the rezoning and MIH areas. The transit zone eliminates required parking for income-restricted housing units, which include all MIH units and other units that are restricted to households with incomes below 80% of AMI. With the transit zone expanded to include the project area, the number of accessory parking requirement, spaces required for the proposed development would be reduced from 487 to 256. Next slide, please. The applicant is also seeking a large-scale general development special permit to allow for modifications to yards, distance between buildings, and height and setback regulations. Some of these waivers are needed due to the regulations imposed when developments are adjacent to an R5 district. These are in place to generally preserve the lower-scale character of R5 districts, which is not represented by the developments to the south. Next slide, please. The applicant is requesting a waiver to the maximum building height of 135 feet or 13 stories for portions of buildings along Flatlands and Pennsylvania, which are also very wide streets at over 100 feet in width. The plane with the dashed outline shows with 135-foot building height limit lands, and the areas in Magenta shows where the buildings exceed both the height and the 13-story limit by one to two stories. The blue portion shown here are where buildings meet the 13-story limit but exceed the 135-foot height limit. Next slide. This image highlights portions of the proposed building that would not comply with zoning, which requires that buildings must have a continuous street wall between four to seven stories high and then must set back at least 10 feet along wide streets and 15 feet along narrow streets such as Louisiana before rising any higher. With, with the interior street network and with significant low-scale buildings on the site, there's limited area to put the bulk of the residential buildings. DCP worked with the applicant to develop building forms that are appropriate for this site in which would visually break up bulk of these buildings while also allowing for continuous activation at the street level, which is an important component of the site design. The project massing relies on allowing building portions to have a sheer rise to the top floor with some of these portions located at the street wall and thus exceeding the maximum base height of 75 feet in Magenta, while other portions of the buildings are set back above the ground floor, creating areas where the base height is not tall enough in blue. Along Louisiana, the building forms will follow the same pattern, but there is a 15-foot setback required above the base height since Louisiana is classified as a narrow street. In addition to the building portions at the street wall that rise above maximum base height, very shallow, approximate five to eight feet areas of the setback portions also require a waiver, since these exceed the maximum 70-foot height within 15 feet of Louisiana. Next slide, please. The applicant is requesting waivers for the minimum distance between buildings, which ranges from 40 to 60 feet, depending on the presence of legally required residential windows. The areas shown in Magenta are areas where the minimum distance is not met between the CCC and buildings 5, 6, 7, 8, and 9, 10. Distances in these areas range from about 30.5 feet to 48 feet, where the required distances are 40 to 50 feet. The applicant also requests waivers for the minimum distance between proposed buildings, which are highlighted in blue, between the PAC and Building 4, where required 50-foot distance would be reduced to 34.5. Between Buildings 5 and 6 and 7, 8, 9, 10, required 60-foot distances would be reduced to 50 feet. And on Building 9, 10, there are two portions above nine stories where a minimum distance of 60 feet would be reduced to 39 feet. These waivers are being requested to ensure a sufficient building depth and adequately-sized residential floor plates. Next slide. Generally, 30-foot rear yards are required for residential uses, and 20-foot rear yards are required for non-residential uses along shared lot lines. Since this site is adjacent to an R5 district, eight-foot side yards are also required. The applicant is requesting to fully waive the required side yards in Magenta on Buildings 2 and 9, 10, and is requesting to fully waive the required rear yards on the parking garage, the PAC, and Building 4, because the proposed buildings are located at the perimeter of the site in order to accommodate for the internal street network and open space. Next slide. The last bulk waiver requested pertains to the transition rule CR23-693, which requires there to be a transition area between higher height density and lower height density residential districts. Within 25 feet of the R5 zoning district boundary, building heights are limited to 45 feet or 55 feet along a wide street for the purpose of providing a visual transition to the 30 to 40-foot height allowed in an R5 district. The dash line here indicates that this 25-foot area, and the shading indicates where the proposed building height is taller than the 45-foot height allowed in Magenta or the 55-foot height allowed in blue. Here, along Pennsylvania, Building 2 rises to 120 feet. Within the 25-foot band limited to 45 feet, buildings range from 50 feet to PAC to 114 feet. Next slide, please. The applicant is also requesting a special permit pursuant to Section 74-12, which states that within these districts, the commission may permit parking garages with more than 150 spaces and can further permit rooftop parking. Next slide, please. In order to grant the special permit, the commission must make the following findings. Note, finding F is not applicable. The commission is also allowed to impose additional requirements to preserve the character of the surrounding area. Detailed responses to these findings can be found in your briefing packages. Next slide. The proposed parking garage is highlighted here, as is the primary access off of Louisiana Avenue. Next slide, please. This is the ground floor plan of the parking garage, which would be regulated with ticket gates. A portion of the 25 required reservoir spaces would be within the garage, and the required bicycle parking would be on the ground floor. Next slide. There would be 45 spaces on the roof of the garage zone here. You can also see the remaining reservoir spaces located within the site on the private street leading to the garage. Next slide. A draft environmental impact statement was prepared pursuant to the requirements of SEACR. The DEIS determined that there was a potential for significant adverse impacts in the categories listed. I'll note that the open space impact is temporary. It would exist only during construction, as this impact would be fully mitigated after the project is complete and all open space has been constructed. Mitigation measures are identified in the DEIS and will be further refined between the draft and final EIS, which will be published, published on September 30, 2022. Next slide, please. Brooklyn Community Board 5 held a public hearing on July 19th and August 8th, voted to approve the application with a vote of 29 in favor, one against, and one abstaining. The recommendations are, one, to modify senior housing to increase the amount of one-bedroom units with a formula that accommodates at minimum 50% of the senior units to be one-bedrooms. Two, work with CB5 and local organizations for hiring process during construction, as well as for post-construction opportunities. And three, work with local housing organizations in CB5 to provide workshops, seminars, and resources to provide, prepare CB5 residents for the home ownership opportunities within the project. Next slide, please. The Brooklyn Borough President held a meeting on Thursday, July 21st, and issued a favorable approval on August 17th with the following conditions. One, that the project's residential component is 100% affordable and income-restricted. Two, that the proposed shuttle service is provided equitably to all residents. And three, that the applicant Innovative Urban Living LLC provide a construction timeline, including the phasing plan for developing the PAA and the restrictive declaration, and conduct a traffic study 18 months after build-out to identify any necessary changes to traffic patterns or pedestrian pathways on the CCC campus and the adjacent public roadways. Next slide. As a response to feedback from the council member and community board, the applicant is contemplating changes to the application, including improvements to the open space such as additional benches coming from Flatlands Avenue, deeper affordability, as previously mentioned, and reductions in stories on buildings along Flatlands. It can speak more to these proposed changes at the public hearing. Next slide. And I'm happy to answer any questions. Thank you.
Thank you, Corinza. That's quite a, quite a presentation. Let me see if there are questions. Commissioner Goodrich.
I have one quick question, and it's, you may have addressed it, but I may have missed it. It's, this isn't the same developer as Innovation Queens, right?
It is not.
Okay. All right. Thank you.
No problem.
Other questions? Commissioner, is that it?
Yes, that's all. Thank you.
Okay. Commissioner Osorio.
Thank you, Vice Chair. Thanks so much for your presentation. That was, that was really useful. I wanted to ask about what's been sort of the extent of your analysis on flooding protection, given the fact that the proposal is actually within the coastal zone? I mean, luckily, it's out of the I mean, luckily, it's out of the 100-year floodplain, but the 500-year floodplain ends literally, actually overlaps a bit with the project site itself. And so I'm wondering whether or not, you know, you've seen sufficient evidence that the proposal is, um, a consistent with the WRP? That's, that's the first question, and I have a couple other, uh, quick questions, uh, that build on that.
Yeah, so thank you for the question. I appreciate that. Um, and of course, this project, um, as a requirement of the application was to submit the WRP, and, uh, the department has reviewed it, um, and has determined it is compliant with, um, the, the policies there. And, uh, the applicant can speak to also any of the kind of design considerations um, that they took into account when, um, thinking about future flood risk here.
I'm, I'm wondering if you can, that's, thank you, thank you for that, but I'm wondering if you can expand a little bit on, on what have you seen to show that, because what I see rather is concerning. For example, the picture that you showed looking east from Flatlands, um, and Louisiana, Louisiana, Louisiana shows um, a double line of trees on both sides of the sidewalk. When you look at the master plan, rather, there's only one row of trees and, and, and there are no clear sort of like, um, uh, interventions uh, in terms of site design that show how the, the, the proposal is actually mitigating potential flooding um, on Flatlands. That's, that's the first part. Second part is that from an urban design point of view, it sounds like the layout of the buildings is, is, is not, could, could actually be adjusted a bit to, to, to mitigate that, uh, that threat. In fact, the quad seems to be sort of like a, farther away from the area where could potentially get flooded. Not to mention that there's also, um, a additional, um, a flooding, uh, vulnerability on, later on, on stormwater, according to the stormwater flood map, there's additional potential for, for flooding down, down the road near Pennsylvania Avenue. So, so, uh, maybe I missed it, maybe it's in the DIS and I would love to sort of like, any guidance you can provide in terms of where to find those, that evidence, but I would love to understand, you know, how are they actually complying with, with the policies of the WRP in that regard?
Um, and thank you for that, and I think that's something that we would like to come back and talk to you about at the post-hearing.
Thanks. Really appreciate it.
Thank you, Commissioner. Uh, further questions on this item? Don't seem to see any, so, uh, this item is of course on for Wednesday, should be a rather extensive hearing, and you'll have the ability to ask more questions. Thank you, Corinza.
Thank you.
Sorry, Vice Chair, can I ask a follow-up?
Please.
Thank you, thank you so much. Sorry, I, I just thought it was also super useful to see that the potential environmental impact on open space has been deemed to be, eh, mitigated. Uh, but I'm wondering if, if, if that also includes sort of the loss for vegetation, because again, sort of like the, what, what you see on Flatland seems to be sort of like a reduction in the number of trees.
Um, I think we'll have the applicant speak to that on Wednesday. Thank you.
Wonderful, thanks so much.
Further questions on this item? Going once. Uh, okay, I don't see any. Uh, so Sarah, please proceed.
Okay, uh, for consideration on Wednesday, August 24, 2022, staff have prepared reports on 705 10th Avenue. Ariel B. is here to discuss.
Good afternoon, Commissioners. First, I would like to note that HPD has withdrawn the tax amendment action from this application. As you may recall, the, the proposed tax amendment was the same as that for the Lario or the MTA side application, which the commission voted to approve on June 8th. The city council made modifications to the proposed tax amendment before granting final approval for the Lario on August 12th. We would like to offer DCP staff support for the Rialto West. The Rialto West would deliver 157 units of affordable housing at 50% to 130% AMI in a high-opportunity, transit-rich neighborhood close to jobs. 23 housing units would be for those who are formerly unhoused. This is a rare opportunity to leverage an underutilized publicly-owned site to support the city's affordable housing goals, foster more inclusive communities, and facilitate new publicly-accessible open space. The department recommends that the commission votes in favor of the application. Thank you.
Any questions on this, uh, before we, before we vote? If not, thank you.
Okay, uh, Morris Heights NCP, Manny Legaras is here to discuss.
Good afternoon, Commissioners. Okay, the first slide is the, uh, Morris Heights 30 West 182nd Street, which is development site number one. Uh, next slide, please. And this is the second slide that shows the development site number two. The Department of City Planning supports HPD's Morris Heights New Construction Program Proposal for UDAP designation, project approval, and disposition of city-owned property to facilitate the construction of 28 units of affordable housing on two long vacant sites in the Morris Heights neighborhood of Bronx Community District Number Five. The proposed dwelling units will have a mixture of affordability levels that meet the goals of the 2017 Jerome Avenue Neighborhood Plan for the Development of City-Owned Property. The proposal meets the intent of the city's authority to acquire and dispose property through the URA process.
Okay, uh, questions on this item before we vote on Wednesday? I don't see any, so thank you, Manny.
You're welcome.
Okay, uh, Morrisonia Open Door, Manny will discuss this as well.
Okay, the Department of City Planning supports HPD's Morrisonia Open Door Program at 1312 to 1314 Chisholm Street. The request for UDAP designation, project approval, and disposition of city-owned property would facilitate the construction of 23 affordable cooperative homeownership units in the Morrisonia neighborhood of Bronx Community District Number Three. HPD's Open Door Program provides opportunities for first-time homebuyers with incentives such as a low-down payment of 5% and a 2% annual appreciation rate. If the unit is sold, it must be sold to a person who qualifies under the program. The proposal meets the intent of the city's authority to acquire and dispose property through the URA process.
Questions on Chisholm Street? Commissioner Marin? I think you're muted.
Yes, can you please remind me what the AMIs were there, please?
Uh, well, it's, uh, I would say it's approximately, uh, $32,000 per year.
You're muted again, Orlando.
No, I'm not. I'm not. Somebody's controlling on the other side because I'm not muted.
Alright. Uh, did you have another question?
Uh, Commissioner Marin?
Okay.
I have, uh, the information. Sorry, go on.
Thank you. No, go ahead, go ahead. I wasn't muted. It, it, somebody's muting me on the other side. I can't control that. So if you have the information, please.
Uh, yes, the AMI I have here is approximately $30,000 per year.
Thank, thank you, Manny.
You're very welcome.
Any further questions on this item? Okay, thank you, Manny.
You, you're very welcome.
Okay, Breckner Sites rezoning, Alexandra Patty Diaz is here to discuss.
Good afternoon, Commissioners. Staff has prepared a favorable report on the Breckner Sites rezoning. As proposed, the developments, uh, will deliver approximately 339 housing units, of which 102 will be complementally affordable under option two, all fronting two wide streets on a high-opportunity transit serve neighborhood. The applicant proposes, eh, to make 99 affordable units for seniors and 22 for veterans. Additional, the proposed, eh, development will replace existing grocery store with a new facility as well as a creation of needed space for after-school programs for youth. This application is a unique opportunity to create new and diverse housing, including housing for veterans and affordable housing for seniors and for all in order to support the city's affordable housing goals and foster more inclusive communities in a neighborhood that had, that is near the bottom for affordable housing production in the last decade, despite having increased its population by approximately 10,000 new residents. The department recommends that the commission votes in favor of this application.
Okay, this is, uh, a project that we had a hearing on a few weeks ago. Uh, it's Community Board 11 in the East Bronx, Starovsneck. Uh, will vote on Wednesday. Are there any questions? I do not see any. Uh, thank you, Alejandra.
Okay, for both Cambria Heights 222nd Street and Cambria Heights 227th Street, historic district staff have prepared reports recommending approval as there are no projected public improvements or plans, uh, for development or growth in the area that would be in conflict with the historic, uh, district designations.
Any questions on this item? I do not see any.
Okay, for post-hearing follow-ups, Ninth Street rezoning, there was a letter in your, um, Friday package, and staff are here to answer any questions.
Just say what that item was again, uh, Sarah.
Ninth Street rezoning, um, in Brooklyn, uh, Community District.
And Gowanus, right?
Yeah, hi, this is Josh, uh, from the Brooklyn office. It was a letter from the applicant just detailing and expanding on their rationale and responding to some of the questions or concerns that came up during public review.
Okay. So has, uh, everyone had the opportunity to see the letter? If you haven't, um, got until Wednesday, and we'll vote on Wednesday, so any questions can be propounded.
Yeah, this is, uh, for post-hearing, so.
Oh, post-hearing, post-hearing, right, okay, alright.
We can always come back on September 5th for future votes if needed.
Got you. Alright, thank you. I don't see any questions at this point.
For, our Gateway Site 26A and Phase 5 proposal, staff is here if there are any, and I believe there is a slide.
Hi there, uh, just wanted to give a brief update on the Community Board Five, uh, recommendation. Um, so if, uh, if you recall, uh, we had a public hearing on this application for Gateway Site 26A and Phase 5. Uh, the public hearing was held on August 10th. This is a, uh, UDAP designation, project approval, and disposition for Site 26A in the Fresh Creek Urban Renewal Area, as well as changes to the urban renewal plan to facilitate a new 100% affordable, uh, eight-story building with about 200 units for seniors plus community facility space located in East New York Community District Five, Brooklyn. Um, HPD is also requesting technical changes to the Fresh Creek URP, which would support a modified building typology for the affordable residential units already planned for and previously approved for within, uh, the plan at Site 5. That's on the west side of the development. So Brooklyn's Community Board Five held a public hearing on July 19th. Um, and on August 18th, by a vote of 29 in favor, one opposed, and one abstention issued a recommendation to approve the application with the following, uh, conditions. Increase the size of the one-bedroom residences. Implement a security system for the building and residence. Create a lottery process to allocate the, uh, proposed 10 parking spaces to residents. Work with local organizations in the community board on hiring opportunities and partner with a local nonprofit for the community facility space. And, uh, that is all. So happy to take any additional questions you may have.
Okay. Any questions on this item? I do not see any, Alex. Thank you.
Okay. Uh, for Innovation Queens rezoning and large-scale general development, staff is working with the applicant on a comprehensive list to the issues raised at the public hearing, and we'll discuss them at the Tuesday, September 6th review session. If there are any further questions, let us know.
Okay, did everyone get that? Because part of it was... So we'll have further questions on Innovation Queens at the September 6th, uh, review session, right?
Yes, during, uh, post-hearing, correct.
Okay, alrighty. Go ahead, Sarah.
Oh, go ahead, Vice Chair.
Do we have any other items for, uh, consideration today?
Nope, um, this, uh, concludes the New York City Planning Commission Review Session of Monday, August 22nd, 2022.
Alrighty, thank you, everyone. Uh, and, uh, we'll see everyone on Wednesday at 10:00 AM. Thank you.
Thank you. Have a great afternoon, everyone.
Thank you.
Take care.
Thank you.